I'm in my starship Enterprise City Hall.
Hey, when we get this meeting started, just let everybody know to mute their mics because with city council, that was one of the reasons you weren't being able to be heard because it was backfeeding into everybody's speakers.
Oh.
So if they're not talking, mute the microphone.
And Jeff's on here, hopefully he's hearing that too.
So Don, are you manually muting and unmuting your microphone or is that just picking up your voice and turning on and off?
No, I'm manually doing it. I do bazillion Zoom calls all day long. And that's one of the big things that is causing a lot of issues with Zoom calls is people leave their mic open and then they, the mic picks up your voice and it backfeeds and it causes an echo and it's a nightmare.
Yeah, I went in Tina's office and run in there because I was up so bad and Lisa was breaking up. We were having trouble with our wifi that night too. But Dan, the meeting was totally empty if you noticed. Hey Deb.
Hi Deb.
Hi Bob.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, trying to get this done.
I was at your house.
Oh, what'd you think?
I wondered if that was your house every time I drove by it.
We do try to keep a nice summer look.
That's beautiful.
Hi Barb.
Now Don, don't call me Barb.
I am. I did that on purpose.
I know you do.
You know you can change the name, right? I'm Miss Deb for Bible study, so I just left it.
I'm gonna assume that's Merle on that Galaxy tab.
Miss Deb is good.
The only one I know of that may not join us is Bob Pugh, he's traveling.
He's in Colorado. Tell you ride.
Who's in Colorado?
Bob Pugh is in Tell You Ride Colorado.
Oh, nice.
I'm leaving for Florida in the morning.
That's nice too.
Not going anywhere.
I'm gonna go see my folks. I'm very excited about it.
But that's, that's a spiking place.
It's northern in the center. I'm not worried about being on either coast or anything crazy, so.
Hi Bob.
Hi.
How are you buddy?
Good, how are you?
Doing great, thank you. Hi Al. Hello Albert.
Hello, hi Lori.
How are you?
Good. Hi Deb.
How you doing now?
Good, good.
Good, haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah.
Six months of quarantine.
Yes, right.
Nobody has seen anybody.
And more.
Keeping you up.
I hear it's seven o'clock this morning because I was up at four.
Oh, my regular time.
Uh oh, the mayor's here. Be quiet everybody.
You may be professional.
What? No, just be quiet.
I mean, I saw, I could see you in here. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening John.
So we need Pat. David. Pat's here, the meeting, so let's hold sheesh. I remember who Secretary Treasurer is.
I believe that's me, I think.
If Pat does not show up, then you'll be running the meeting.
Oh, great.
Bye sir.
I'm gonna have to take John's running the meeting 101 on this one.
Yeah, we don't know what a real meeting looks like anymore.
Is that on yet? Was me giving him a stink eye. There's Kathleen, hey Kathleen.
Good evening Lori.
How are you?
Good, doing well. How are things?
Good.
Hanging in there?
Yeah, actually it's really busy, which is a good thing, right?
Are you in the office most days or?
Every day.
Every day? Yeah, we're still at home.
Two days from home. Yes. We're starting just a second here.
Need a place to rest this.
Do we get to see your pretty face?
What?
See your pretty face?
I don't even know what you guys are seeing at this point. I'm using my husband's phone.
You need to turn your video on.
Hey, this is Dave. You know, I was getting a password prompt. I don't know if there's a specific password I'm missing somewhere?
No, did you call in 843-5799-8620?
Yeah.
And then, but you gotta call in on 929-205-6099.
Uh, let's see. So, but for the Zoom web, for the Zoom meeting, oh, so, because I was doing the 843-5799-8620.
That's the meeting ID.
Yeah, so, so in Zoom, when I punch that in on the computer, it asks me for a password to join the meeting.
Does anybody else have password in?
I think what he's looking for, I think he's looking for his email address.
No, I'm saying password.
Lori, do you still have him, Lori, do you still have him as the administrator from the last meeting that we had? Remember you put him to be able to work on the settings?
Oh.
That could be, I'm not sure.
Oh, hmm, yeah, let me see, you know what, I'll try my password for Zoom, maybe it'll work, let me see.
Yeah, because remember you took over the meeting trying to get the settings right.
Right.
Uh, for you, can you hear this stuff?
I can hear it.
The start screen's the same.
They asking them to log into Zoom and you could just do a join meeting instead of logging in.
I think he just laughed us. As soon as he's back, we can start.
So you.
Come back. Cat. You need to unmute yourself. Service Chair.
I'm here.
Okay. Okay, Kathleen, did we get David back?
Alright, so look, there we go, cool.
Who's on 42310614?
That's me.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'll hang up from there and then join to the computer.
Okay.
Okay.
This is Vice Chair.
I'm here.
You can call the order.
I called the meeting to order. On October 13th at seven o'clock.
It's seven, 704.
Can we roll call?
Absolutely. Commissioner Pugh is traveling, so if he was gonna be able to call in. Vice Chair Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Baum. Merle, you have to unmute yourself. Do you think that's him? Commissioner Quarles.
Here.
Commissioner Wass.
Here.
Commissioner Story.
Here.
Commissioner Shackelford.
Here.
Commissioner Borgi.
Here.
Commissioner Dimicio.
Here.
The form is present.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the agenda. The motion.
Motion to approve the agenda is so written.
Okay, motion made by Borgi's, by Quarles. And I have to do a roll call. I'm just gonna say last names. Rice.
Yes.
Baum.
Yes.
Quarles.
Yes.
Us.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Shackelford.
Yes.
Borgi.
Yes.
Dimicio.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We did the agenda already for August 1st, we did that?
Approval of the minutes from August 11th meeting would be the next item.
Do we have approval of that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 11th.
A motion made by Commissioner Borgi's, Commissioner Wass. Roll call, Rice.
Okay, now we have, next, are you ready for unfinished business?
We're doing a roll call. To approve the minutes from August 11th. Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Baum.
Yes.
Quarles.
Yes.
Wass.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Smith, oh, skip it, Shackelford.
Can I approve if I wasn't here last month?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Borgi.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks. Number four, unfinished business. Master Plan Adoption Timeline.
So I, um, do have, just, and to her in a minute, Kathy Duffy is present, she's our, our guest of honor, we'll call her this evening. I did put a Master Plan Revision Timeline in here, so you all get an idea of what Mike and Kathleen and I have all worked on as far as dates go.
Lori, Lori, your, your audio is really bad, is Jeff's?
It is.
Yeah, he's breaking up.
What if everybody puts themselves on mute? Mute, mute, mute. Am I still breaking up?
You're tinny and you're kind of getting it out a little bit.
Well, I guess I'm gonna have to run in with Jeff in the other room. Alright, please hold.
This is where the Jeopardy music would come in handy right now.
I'm in here, yeah, I don't know what's going on.
Can I use this?
Yeah.
I'm sorry Jeff.
That's alright.
Oh, it's hot in here.
I know, it's warm in here.
How do we get my face on here? Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Alright, I'm sorry guys.
Hold on one second, Jeff, can you double check to make sure things are going out to the, and your file's gonna be fine?
What did you say, mayor?
The audio for the recording, just to make sure that we, everything's gonna be fine.
Yeah, it's recording.
Just because the recording was bad last time at the council meeting and it, we sounded fine, is there a way to check that?
Not during the meeting, no.
That's what I was wondering, okay.
Well, just so you know, after you pass a motion tonight to forward the draft copy of the Master Plan to council, it will go to them, to their October 20th meeting. Then the plan will get distributed. I'm not gonna read this whole thing to you, but if you see how things will work out, January 12th will be a public hearing before this body to adopt the Master Plan to forward to city council for final adoption. So, we are, we're on target. I think this is an ambitious schedule. And I really think that now that things are rolling, I think that we'll be able to meet that target date. And I can take any questions that anybody may have. Any questions?
No.
Alright, we can move the agenda. Did you want me to read the item or do you see it?
I can see it, but I somehow lost you on my screen. Are you talking about the, no, go ahead and read it yourself then.
Oh my gosh, no, not really. Alright, so, this is something rather unique. Mike and I are presenting to you this evening. We have a gentleman who currently has a business in Canton Township. And it's been a very successful business for probably about 40, 50 years. It's called Boyer's Meats. And we all know what's happening in Canton right now with the building boom of housing. Polty Homes is literally squeezing this gentleman out of his location. So, he reached out to us, Mike and I have been working with him, trying to find a location where he can build new here in the city of Wayne. Happened to remember that the Crabels have a significant amount of land where Cogswell Street dead ends. So I hooked him up with Tom Crable. The gentleman, Mr. Crable is coming to us tonight for rezoning, I can explain that. What the rezoning would be for is a USDA approved meat processing, butchering and retail facility. The reason why we're asking for rezoning is, as we all know, we're gonna be eventually redoing our zoning ordinance. So that the terms in our zoning ordinance are with more current times. IND 2 does allow for meat processing, however, it does not allow for what they call slaughtering or in today's terms butchering. So, we want to do a conditional rezoning that would allow for the butchering. And the unique part about this, that Mike's been, actually Mike went out and visited the facility, is he would like to have a retail component. There is retail right across the street in our Medical Marijuana Provisioning Center. So, that is the reason for the request this evening. We are coming to set a public hearing. And obviously you'll have renderings and a lot more information. This will be three brand new buildings. Exciting that it's gonna be new tax revenue to the general fund and it's gonna be a very unique use for our city. But fortunately, it's in a heavily industrial zoned area. Forgot to have someone make a motion first. Apologize.
I can make a motion that we set the public hearing.
Thank you.
Quarles.
I can take any questions, Mike or I, either one can take any questions you have. This, like I said, is simply the setting of a public hearing. No questions? Okay, roll call. Rice.
Yes.
Baum. Commissioner Baum, you have to unmute yourself, sorry. Commissioner Quarles.
Yes.
Commissioner Wass.
Yes.
Commissioner Story.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackelford.
Yes.
Commissioner Borgi.
Yes.
Commissioner Dimicio.
Yes.
Commissioner Baum. You have to unmute yourself, Merle.
Laura, you can manually unmute him yourself.
Forgot about that.
Okay, how's that?
Merle, yeah, you vote yes?
Yes.
Okay. Good deal. Alright, that leads us into our guests this evening, Kathleen Duffy with the Smith Group. Mike and I have worked very closely for over a year now on the Master Plan. Kathleen, I am going to allow you to take over. And Jeff is here, our IT person is here, and just so you all know, this is being recorded tonight. So, everybody at home will have the opportunity to watch this and the council will have an opportunity to watch it at a later date. So Kathleen, if you want to go ahead.
Yeah, it's still saying host disabled screen sharing, so.
She said she's disabled. Kathleen needs to be able.
Alright. Thank you for giving me permission to share my screen. Let me just make you all bigger on my screen again. Alright, well, good evening. It's been a while since the last time I talked to you. We've been kind of disrupted by a little crisis. Limited our ability to meet in person, so I'm grateful to meet with you all virtually. Like Lori said, Mike, Lori and I, and my team have been going back and forth a number of times, getting the draft to the point where we thought it was ready for you to take a look at. Let's see, alright, there we go. So, um, just a reminder of some of the things that went into this process. We had an online survey for residents and businesses. We had several focus groups, including a couple opportunities to meet with you as a planning commission, meeting with the DDA, having some downtown specific and economic development specific conversations. We vetted our draft goals with you last time we met. And presented some draft downtown strategies and land use strategies that will set you up, like Lori said, for future zoning changes. The other big piece is the economic development and marketing strategy that our colleagues over at CIV Planning prepared for you. So, at the end of the day, this plan is making you that much closer to being redevelopment ready certified. So we're grateful for the RRC's sponsoring of our ability to help you on this plan for your technical assistance. And we're knocking off several of your to-do list items for the, both the master plan, the downtown plan, economic development and marketing. So just a reminder and kind of an orientation, I don't know how many of you have glanced through the plan in much detail, but hopefully I can orient you to a bit of some of the key features of it. So when you're looking through it, you know what to be looking for. So the goals, we, we lettered the goals here in this chart upfront in the introduction chapter. And then, when they applied to different topic chapters throughout the rest of the Master Plan, they show up where relevant. So it's a kind of a way to tie back how we're implementing some recommendations and narrative to accompany those. So when they apply in the neighborhoods chapter or the downtown chapter or economic development chapter, we've reiterated them there. And then, there further in those chapters are objectives listed in the little blue boxes and those are a little bit more specific. They kind of take the goals to a next level. And then one more level of specificity are the strategies or actions. So throughout the narrative in the plan, we've kind of called out some key text boxes to kind of show what we think are the first steps that the city should work on, on implementing this plan. And then at the very end of the plan, in the implementation chapter, you'll see a table that shows all of those things organized by goals. So we really wanted to provide you with a strong framework that provided, a lot of the goals were taken from the city council strategic plan and also the downtown plan and also from what we heard during public engagement. So really, covering all the different topics that get talked about during the plan and a framework as you progress through the plan of checking all of our recommendations against those goals. So let's jump right into the fun stuff. So the downtown plan from 2010, we went through and worked on what needed to come and go out of that and what is no longer relevant and what are the priorities. And I think, just reiterating the importance of that plan and how it had significant public input at that time. But with the recession, made it kind of bad timing, which this plan, hopefully the less than desirable economic climate we're in right now will just be a launching point for some of this, these plans, recommendations this time. I hope we don't get caught in the same lack of ability to implement. So that's why we wanted to be really strategic on the things that you should work on first. Because it's gonna take some time and effort. But from the downtown plan, we thought that there were a lot of still very valid recommendations. So I'm just quickly going over those, preserving the historic character, making sure that your downtown is as walkable as it is. Building that residential population, looking for more opportunities to include housing and projects downtown, making it safer for walking and biking, which I'll share just briefly a little bit of this continued recommendations from that plan for Wayne and Michigan Avenue. And then getting into some just best practices for public realm improvements, ways that the DDA can help support the city through streetscape amenities, site design, and just some best practices for building design also to help set the stage for future zoning changes. So when it comes to the street network, just some opportunities that remain from the 2010 plan with some revisions. But really trying to think in the super long term. So, we want, back in 2010, it was really important to reintegrate the grid and we still think that's really important. So as redevelopment happens, as things are prioritized, looking at making those connections, really restoring the heart of downtown, strengthening the main street core along kind of westbound Michigan. And putting stuff in your plan that can help you converse strategically with MDOT. We're going through a number of conversations in many communities we're working with, trying to get MDOT to revise their approach to some of parts of Michigan Avenue. And we're working on that in Dearborn as well. So I hope that by getting it in your plan, that you want some shifts for, for that and then for Wayne Road, for dealing with the road commission as well. Those were top, top priorities. So we just wanted to outline in there, realizing that it's gonna take some work and be challenging. But realizing this is a 20-year plan and we wanted to just keep those in there. The other big thing, which we mentioned the last time we met, talking about land use, was related to housing types. And I think this is a critical piece as communities across Michigan, just like yours are transitioning. There's not a lot of greenfield developments. There's not a lot of open space that can be turned into subdivisions in Wayne anymore, you're built out. So how can we look for opportunities to provide alternative housing types? There's this missing mill, is what it's called, of types of housing units that we just don't have a lot of. But there's a huge demand for in southeast Michigan. So, providing some recommendations, both in the downtown and in the new mixed residential kind of attitude, that it's not just about apartment buildings, it's about a wide variety of housing types. Because that's attractive to young people, people buying, wanting to buy their first small home, maybe they can't afford a big home. Looking to get triplex or duplex. And just thinking about all those different housing types and how they can be affordable to a variety of different income levels in different parts of the city. And really, making it possible for people to live. And really, making it possible for people to live, especially downtown, can definitely, could see some potential for more of these types of housing units. So that led us to our conversation last time, which was really focused on land use, which was the biggest new piece, I think, other than your economic development strategy in the plan, which is setting you up for some zoning changes that would allow you to be a little bit more focused on character, and what it's like to live and work and play in, especially your downtown, and a little bit less focus on use. But as we think about that, what, how things can be grouped and simplified and made a little bit flexible so that it's more important to design the buildings to be what you want them to look like, to help reinforce that place-making and street, what it feels like to walk along your main streets. And then the uses can be a bit more flexible, so just even for your industrial districts, too, cleaning up some of those uses. But our real focus was more on the downtown-specific and kind of radiating out from there. So, let's jump into some of these. So the biggest changes, just as a reminder for the downtown, is to have a couple different districts that really promote that character. And so the downtown storefronts kind of district is this idea of having that Main Street character that's already present and filling in some of the holes, the missing teeth in your kind of traditional Main Street-type businesses, both along westbound Michigan and north on Wayne, where you have buildings fronting the street and making it a bit more walkable. And I think we would like to roll back some of the auto-oriented type uses that have happened along there. The downtown mixed-use is kind of a transition district that would allow some variety of infill opportunities, having more housing integrated kind of into the area around your kind of downtown core. And then designating some key downtown residential areas, which is where we would recommend preserving what single-family housing and some of your more historic homes are there, but letting some other compatible types of character infill with that. So here's just a quick overview of that Main Street kind of urban infill, your densest area of town, reinforcing that walkable Main Street character and having facades. This is where we would recommend the strongest design standards to encourage nice, well-oriented facades in your Main Street district. And this idea of this kind of transition district, downtown mixed-use, is a little bit more flexibility. Whether they want to build a Main Street-type building, they could, or they could build some townhouses. You already kind of are doing this in many parts of your downtown, so just kind of strengthening that and strengthening the intent of that in future zoning updates. And then here's just some of that idea of kind of these mixed housing types, how that could work. We're writing a lot of these districts across the state right now. A lot of people are wanting to provide more flexibility since there is a housing crisis. So right now, it's zoned some weird industrial stuff. I think the intent was that it was going to transition to industrial, and I don't think it's going to, so just providing that strong neighborhood character really close within walking distance of downtown to get those rooftops, because it's important in order for your downtown to thrive, that you have people nearby and within walking distance. So hopefully this will set the stage for that. So here's that draft future land use map, where you can see that dark blue is that downtown core, this kind of medium blue is that kind of transitional. I'm realizing the key did not show up on this. That's okay. That mixed-use kind of transition district, this kind of darker brown is this idea of these kind of urban neighborhoods where you already have built-out neighborhoods, but allowing some compatible infill. And then the other big thing is just defining some corridor standards for Michigan Avenue, strengthening your commercial standards, just to require a little bit higher-quality design. And also, some tweaks to the industrial as well, just to have light industrial and heavy industrial more clearly defined. And also providing some opportunity for this mixed residential district, which is the brown. And again, transitioning from purely thinking of that as apartment buildings to thinking about all the other types of attached residential that could go in there, and how different undeveloped areas or parts of the city down here especially, that would transition to be a good infill housing opportunity.
Hey Kathleen?
Yeah.
Can I jump in, or should we wait till the end of the presentation to discuss this?
You can jump in on land use right now.
Yes, that'd be great. So, one of the things that we've talked about, Lori, you and I, is the area between Howe and Vinoy and along Van Born Road there.
This brown section here.
That's right. And trying to figure out the best use for that. There is land that can be used between the Reeser Building and Van Born Road. There's some vacant land, just a little bit more to the east of that. And then we currently have Wayne County there at the corner of Vinoy and Van Born. But as we think about the future, do we really want that to go multifamily, or do we want to introduce, try and go more towards like an industrial business or business corridor type, or I don't know what anybody, or is multifamily maybe the way we do want to look at this going forward?
Does anyone have any particular thoughts on this frontage down here? I'd say the reason I agreed to show it as mixed residential is for the reason that you have a lot already zoned industrial, and you have, and we'd like to concentrate your commercial along Michigan Avenue and Wayne. And so I thought this was a prime opportunity to find more opportunities for housing. But it's your plan, not mine, so.
Mike?
Yes, yes.
What question? Who owns, doesn't Reeser own that land there between the Reeser Building and Wayne County, or does Wayne County own it?
That's a good question. I'm not sure who the ownership is, but what I'm, what we're thinking is in the future land use, we're thinking, you know, there's a lot of properties not being used there that could be used. So, we're thinking if somebody were to sell that whole building maybe someday, or maybe they kept the building and sold that, that piece of land that's between the building and parking lot and Van Born Road, what would we want to see there?
Mike?
Could you find out who owns that property? Because I'm under the impression that belongs to Wayne County. I mean, my no?
I'm here, I'm here. That, that land is part of the Senior Alliance property. So all that piece next to the county and up, that all belongs to no, over one, that all belongs to Reeser. I'm sorry, wait. Is that how, that's Reeser, I'm sorry. Over, over a little bit next to the square to, towards Vinoy, that piece.
This piece.
The next one over.
Up.
This one?
Oh, other way. Right there. That is part of, that is part of the Senior Alliance property.
And that, and the reason Lori is bringing that up is because the Senior Alliance is using the property off of Vinoy Road there, but the piece that goes north and south in the back there, that's land that could be repurposed also. So there are some opportunities for doing different things there, and as we're talking about, what we'd like to see is future use that we could look towards, for direction. If somebody doesn't fit what's currently there, we'd like to look at this document and say, hmm, what was the mind of the city of Wayne when we were doing this revision, to see what they think it probably should go toward. So this is our opportunity to think about what we really want that to look like between Howe and Vinoy.
We've got it multifamily right now, right?
Mm-hmm.
In this?
That's true. Right now, it's all, currently, it's owned all residential. So we'd be, we'd be making a change in this future land use to try and show it as multifamily.
Maybe, I don't know if anybody has a real strong opinion on that, but we've got 63 days to all chime in on it.
Yeah, that'd be something to look at. And when you drive by it, think about, think about what it might look like to have some.
Let me, let me say, in my opinion, I mean, I live right here, and I walk that area all the time. Is there enough room to put multifamily on that piece of land? I mean, there is enough room down there?
Yeah.
I mean, if they, if they, if we could sell it, multifamily would probably bring in more revenue to the city than anything else would.
Yep. That's a, it's a pretty big chunk down there. And by revising your multifamily, too, to be a little more flexible in terms of not just apartment buildings, but townhouses and stuff, too. It could be a really cool mix. You could do a PUD-type thing and have a variety of housing types and yeah.
Good deal. You want to go ahead, Kathleen?
Sure. So the, the other chapter that's brand-spanking-new for you is this economic development chapter. So in here is an economic development kind of summary and strategy, as well as a summary of the market strategy. And the market strategy in its entirety is included in the appendix. So there's a lot of beneficial information in there to try and guide some of your messaging, and how best to sell yourselves as a community as you're seeking these redevelopment opportunities as well. So some of the key takeaways from this chapter is working with MEDC in Wayne County to help with some of your redevelopment priorities, sharing that message of why people should want to come to Wayne. I think the butcher example is a great idea. You can find more opportunities for those types of businesses to know that you're open for business, and strengthening all the great work that the city's already doing on that front. Developing a small-business toolkit would help some of those small businesses understand how they can grow and succeed. Working with workforce development, looking for some workforce training opportunities. How could you partner with the community college or a tech program at a school district to kind of just, again, work on on providing opportunities for, for training and workforce. And also, again, slowing down Michigan Avenue to, so that people, so it feels more pedestrian-friendly and a walkable downtown, is talked about in this chapter as well, so. In general, some just great resources for you to set you on course. Just kind of summarizing a lot of the stuff you're already doing as well, and just providing a framework for some recommendations for moving forward. That chapter also touches on redevelopment, so this wouldn't be a redevelopment-ready communities plan without thinking about that. So in the downtown chapter, we've identified some key opportunities, as well as, in this chapter shows the entire city and some opportunities. So there are some school closures and parks that might be able to be repurposed, as well as some projects already underway. So this is just a snapshot in time of some of those opportunities and identifying them. So as you move through the RRC process, the RRC program will help you package some of these up when you identify which ones they are. Maybe another one would, could be this idea of multifamily housing along Van Born, like we just talked about. So it's just identifying some of these, that these, we expect these properties to be key redevelopment opportunities, and what do we want to see there, and some strategies for how to package them up and try and find some developers that are, that fit your vision for them. So I mentioned that implementation at the end is this chapter full of recommendations for you. So I hope you have had a chance to look through those, or can, during the review period, once that starts. And really focusing on this section in terms of like what the priorities are. So we've got a couple different tables in here. The first one that I'm showing here is the priority action. So these are the ones that we highlighted throughout the plan that we thought were the most important ones that seem to trickle to the top. Make sure that those are the right ones. See if there are any other top priority ones that we want to reference in this table. This is your kind of like star student list of things that you want to tackle first. And then throughout the other tables, there's a table that's specific to working on RRC-related tasks. And then each table following that is related to each of the goals. So it kind of pulls everything back to those goals. So review this, look at the priorities, look at the responsibilities. We don't want this plan to fall solely on Mike and Lori's shoulders, and so be thinking about what is in the planning commission's realm of things to be working on, how the DDA and others can help support economic development activities, whether any new task forces or committees might need to be formed to help implement some of the strategies in here. So as you're looking through that, realize that this is kind of like the to-do list. So we want to make sure we're capturing everything, and we can definitely edit things, so. So Lori mentioned a couple dates coming up, so what needs to happen tonight is if you guys think that the draft is good enough to pass along to council, I always say that it doesn't need to be 100%. It needs to be like 85, 90%. We think we have a solid enough draft that it's time to start getting significant feedback on that. And so it's, it's good to get the ball rolling, and tweaks can be made, so there might be an interim. So you, you need to just say, yes, we're ready to distribute it, then council has to authorize the distribution of it. Then, once it's distributed to your neighbors, posted on your website, shared with utility companies, and all the stuff that's required per the law. That's when comments will start coming in. They might come in from the county or your neighbors. Usually, we don't hear a lot back from people on this, but you never know. You haven't had a full-blown master plan in a long time, so people might be curious to see what you're thinking. But probably an interim planning commission meeting, maybe. We'll see how the comments come back in. And Lori, I can advise Lori and Mike on when it might make sense. Maybe you'll get no comments. Maybe you guys will just have your comments. The council might have some comments, and we just want to package those into a consensus set of revisions that you then send to us, and we'll update the plan and get it ready for adoption. Then you have, at the end of that 63-day period, you have a public hearing, and you can choose to adopt it that night, or wait until your next meeting to adopt it. If a lot of people come out, and there's a lot of hopefully, hopefully they'll have come out during the public review process and submitted their comments during that. But sometimes they wait until the very end, and you don't feel comfortable adopting it that night, then you can wait till your next meeting to make more edits. And once you adopt it, you send it to council, and then council needs to adopt the exact same version. So at that point, they better not have any more comments, because if they do, it comes back to you. You make the tweaks and you readopt it, so. I've never had that happen in my 12 years of doing this. So usually by the time you get to that point, where, I mean, just the back and forth alone that we've had with Mike and Lori trying to get this plan right, we feel like it's in good shape. It doesn't mean it's done, though, by any stretch of the imagination. So definitely look through it with a critical eye and see if anything jumps out. I provided a memo. I don't know, Lori, if you distributed that to them. If not, we can make sure that they get that tomorrow.
They, they have the review checklist.
Perfect. So look at that. Make sure your name is spelled correctly. Provide some kind of high-level questions to orient you throughout the plan. Like, what are some things that you're really excited about? What are you concerned about? And then looking at that action plan and being critical of the priorities, of who should be involved, and how this actually works. And if you can mark those up or email your thoughts, even better, to Lori, since we're digital these days. Be harder to get a paper copy from you. That would be really helpful during the review process. And hopefully council can fill that out, too, so that they can, just kind of helps orient you to the plan a bit. So, that's it. That's all I have.
Kathleen, thank you very, very much. We truly appreciate it.
I'm excited for you guys.
We are, too. This has been a long time coming. Thank you for all of your hard work on this.
Yeah.
So you'll unshare the screen then, Kathleen?
I can unshare now, yep.
Any questions? Oh, she did it already. All right. Where's Pat? There she is. I don't, Pat, did you want to see if anybody had any questions for Kathleen before she's done? Does anybody have any questions?
Does anybody?
I have one quick question. Okay, when I saw that, you talked about the parking lots. I was thinking about the parking lot along Michigan Avenue, across from the state Wayne.
Yeah.
Are you looking at that for, as a possible redevelopment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and we also have on Michigan Avenue westbound, and there's a couple, one or two on Wayne Road, empty lots. Do you think those are developments, or should be green spaces, or is that just a waste of space?
What are you talking about, Merle?
The one between, the one between the Village Bar and
You've got a development cook in there. That's definitely not green space.
Okay, actually I was just asking.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Let me see here, this map.
And then you're talking about Wayne Road next to the Knights of Columbus Hall, Merle?
Yeah, they're going to use that one. Are they?
If we could get something there, that would be great, but that could end up remaining green space.
Okay, and the last one, the one on Wayne Road that backs up the Rouge. That big lot right there, she come across the bridge on Northbound Wayne Road.
Yeah, that's privately owned and it's actually not real big for development.
Okay.
Um, I did want to, in my prepping for this meeting, so here's, this is calling out that parking lot along Westbound Michigan. And then I noticed in the draft that you have that a mistake in that right here, this one, I already edited this. In your version, it says Wayne, but it's the, it's the outlot potential for that property along Michigan Avenue. And it's more specific in the plan itself. So that was one thing I found yesterday that we had wrong in there. So.
No one even noticed.
Well, it's one of the top priorities. So it's just how we transcribed it from the plan to the table. Some stuff got lost in translation. So we wanted to make it clear that that was a key priority site. We think there's a lot of potential. So. Any other questions?
Couldn't the property next to the river on Wayne Road there, couldn't that be like a little high-rise apartment complex?
Mike, is there enough land there to do anything?
You know what? Typically that lot would be used for a single-family residential. But Pat, if anybody came up with a great idea on that, we certainly would consider. We try and pack them in.
I'm sure the accounting firm would love to sell it.
Um, I want to pull up the map and have you guys tell me where specifically to make sure that the future land use and everything is shown, what we want to show.
It's a parcel just north of the river on Wayne Road on
Ash.
Eastbound side.
On the eastbound, okay. Side of just north of City Hall then. Like the corner of Ash and Wayne, okay.
Right.
Yeah. We thought about taking that, it would be nice to trigger the delivery for the people to put canoes up there and
Right. Yeah, like a kind, it could be an interesting mixed-use opportunity. It, the challenge there is the river. Right? So the parcel looks a little, I'm just looking at the parcel lines versus what's showing up on an aerial. There's a lot that appears to be riverbed kind of stuff like so it makes the actual like what is vacant on here? I'm just estimating in Google Maps right now. It, I mean, appears to be eighty-seven hundred square feet. So that doesn't mean acres. You could definitely fit some small apartment buildings on, or not necessarily. I don't know that a high-rise would fit because you'd probably want to provide parking there and then parking gets expensive.
Like a fourplex maybe?
Yep, yep. Let me see. We can even call that out as a specific redevelopment priority too. That would be an easy edit to that map.
Thank you. Are there any other questions before we make the motion to pass the draft master plan onto the city council at next Tuesday's meeting for distribution?
I'll submit a motion.
I'll start the support quarrels. Roll call. A second, sorry. Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Quarles?
Yes.
Was?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Shekelford?
Yes.
Forgie?
Yes.
Demisio?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Kathleen, thank you so much.
Yay. Step one, done. Good luck guys. I look forward to updates from Lori and Mike as things move through the process to see how else we can help get this one all tied up for you.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Move the agenda commissioner, Rice?
Yeah, to the twenty-twenty zoning application list. I thought that was very interesting.
Yeah. What, what did you find interesting?
Didn't, why didn't you give the application list on today? Didn't that come up? What was that?
Yeah, that's, the, the list that I gave to you is all the businesses so far in the year twenty twenty that have submitted zoning applications. And as you can see, the busiest months have been August and September of the whole entire year when things are supposed to be really bad. But I don't think Mike and I have ever been busier than we are right now between his department with inspections, site plan review, new development coming in. It's, it's incredible. And that's why I wanted to share this with you specifically to point out August and September. It's incredible.
Kathleen, is that happening in a lot of cities?
Yeah, it's very weird to me how busy things have been during this crisis, which gives me hope that it's not going to be the same as last time.
It's all that free money everybody's getting.
I've been donating mine, but yes, I think in general, we're seeing a lot of business activity continuing and building, construction. Life is moving on, albeit tentatively. Yep.
Alrighty, next item. Collector's comments. Well, Mike and I have some really great information to share with you tonight. I'm sure you got your correspondence in regards to Infinity Homes. I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to get to Westland to look at the homes that they build there, but they're absolutely gorgeous. Pat, I, I'm really excited to, to share with you that this builder is putting basements and two-car garages at every single home. The real estate people are ecstatic. Yeah, so you saw the price, one dollar, the council approved it. But the, the really cool part about this is twenty-two single-family homes at Quanis Park. The next step of this that the council approved is the right of first refusal for eighteen months. Sue Nguyen, Angelo DiMario and the Vandenberg School Site, twenty-two point four eight acres of potential single-family housing. Infinity Homes wants to build there and I'm going to turn it over to Mike if you don't mind and let him just kind of share with you the reasoning behind Infinity wanting the right of first refusal and the three parks. Mike?
Thank you Lori. So Infinity recognizes that there hasn't been a lot of new development recently in the city of Wayne. And they think there is a great opportunity here. And so when they build these twenty-two homes, they think that that's going to generate some excitement and enthusiasm. There's a good chance that that will happen. And they don't want another developer to swoop in and take care of, or take away that momentum that they started to generate. So they're hoping, that's, that's the reason that we have this other agreement of right of first refusal on the land in the southeast part of our town also. But they are excited and they think, you know what, if they're the first ones to come in here in a while and generate that enthusiasm, they want to be able to continue to build on that and move forward and not let anybody else get in. So that's the reason for them wanting this other agreement.
So thank you, Mike. As you know, that is already plotted out. So the, the plans won't come before the, the commission for Quanis. So that is why, but I did, what Mike and I both wanted to make sure that you guys, even though you're not voting on anything, we want you to be in the loop a hundred percent. So you know what's going on. That's why I provided you with the Infinity brochures. I can tell you the houses up by me are starting around two, 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 two and above. They have sold in the first couple of months, close to, I think, what did they say? Almost half, Mike? Half the lots. So they've taken the deposit on already. So, and we've already got fifteen, sixteen basements done in just a couple of months.
Lori?
Go ahead.
Sir, I also wanted to point out that because Quanis is an infill type of housing situation, even though it's a whole block of infill, it's still primarily infill housing. Those lots were already divided as part of the subdivision that's all around them. That's why it's not coming to you. But if they want to move forward with Angelo DiMario and Sue Nguyen and Vandenberg, then you guys will very much be involved in that whole process. So we want, I just wanted to take a minute to show you the difference between those two.
Yes, thank you, Mike. I forgot that important part. So yeah, so this is exciting. I just, real quickly Vandenberg School, we've got to, a meeting scheduled Monday. Myself, our real estate attorney, George Cantus, and Tony Spiezak from the school district to kind of wrap this transition of the Taff Galloway swap. They're going to be expanding Taff Galloway. So we're going to give them that part. They're giving us Vandenberg. So Mike and I are excited to get this going. And then I guess the, the next thing I want to share with you tonight. It will be shared with the city council on Friday. As you know, three five five four zero Michigan Avenue, the old Wayne Eagle Building met with a lot of horrible criticism. Some very terrible things were said to the business owners. And, and Mike and I worked really hard to apologize for the horrible comments that were made to him and the things that were said to him. To convince him that Wayne was really a good place to do people and to do business. And there are some good people in the city. Well, I was able to get through to him and I, I was very honest with him and telling him I didn't know if the support was going to be there or not for that rezoning to go through for the substance abuse facility. I asked him if he would kind of just pray about it and think of maybe that there could be another use that he could use for that building. And I'm super excited. I walked the building with him today. I have a surgeon going to look at it tomorrow to potentially have outpatient surgery facility. Anwar, the gentleman that owns the building can have his medical office in the building. And then there's off, upstairs in that building is looks like something you'd find downtown Plymouth. It's absolutely gorgeous. So we have a potential of three different lighter users in that building. Totally would not have to be rezoned. It's what's supposed to be in that area. So he is withdrawing his request for the rezoning. So like I said, I have not had the opportunity to share that with the council yet, but I did want to share that with all of you because I'm sure you had the pleasure of listening to the comments that were made on not only this meeting but Facebook. So I'm very grateful that Anwar has chosen to stay in our community and he didn't walk away. Mike, I don't know if you have anything else to add, but that's all I have this evening.
Done, thank you.
Should we go to the next item? Is it, you're done?
Yes.
Okay. Any board member comments at this time?
And I, I just have a couple of questions. Lori or Mike, these new homes that are being built, are they going to be all the utilities underground or are they going to be pulled? Do you know?
No, I want to say I'd know, but I don't. So we're, there's no utility poles being proposed to be added. The only thing that we're adding is a little bit of sanitary and storm sewer. Maybe a hydrant or two if necessary. But we're those are the only utilities that we're thinking about adding at this time.
All right, very good. And just, you know, I, I want to say I'm very excited about everything that's happening in our city. Lori's worked extremely hard along with a lot of her people in the city hall to get where we're at today. And I read the master plan from front to back. I think it's exciting. I think that as we grow and we try to get some new, younger couples and people in our city, that we're going to have an awesome city. But I, like I stated to Mike before the meeting, it's going to take a team and it's going to take a team that are joined together and holding each other's hands and building each other up. So being part of this planning commission and on the zoning board, I'm very excited for the things that are happening in our city. And with that, I'll go back to you, Pat. Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment from the board? And I guess we don't have any public, anybody public, do we? Or L, you have something to say?
No, no. It would be Tom or I.
Mr. Porter joined us.
Yeah.
Any comments?
I got a couple of things. I, I don't even know if I've mentioned this to Lori. As we're looking at this, CLS is looking to sell their building right now.
Yes.
So that, they also own that parking lot across from the state Wayne. So I think we should be looking at that as an option for things. Because I think if we could have things on both sides of the street, it would actually make the downtown more complete. And then one of the questions that I, if we've, if we've figured out any further on how to, is there a way for, where we have this historic buildings to get the, the rider for elevator? Because
John, Mayor, I've got some good news for you.
Okay.
So found out today through Paul Vaughn, I had to call and ask him about, ask him about the Eagle Building. There is the Michigan building, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, Michigan Building Restoration Code that is utilized in situations like say the Eagle Building, if less than fifty percent of the business is being done upstairs, then they don't have to put an elevator in. Is that correct, Mike? Did I recite that properly?
That's, yes.
Okay. So, so for example, the reason why I asked today, I called Paul is because I wanted to give Anwar an answer about that upstairs. And if less than fifty percent of the business is taking place up there, which it would be a very small fraction of his business, he does not have to put an elevator in. So the same would probably, I don't know, I don't want to say anything, but the dental office that Mike would have to weigh in on. I don't know if that would be the same situation based on what they'd want to do up there, but that is something that we have to, in, in our favor now, Mayor.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I mean, that, that there's other people are doing it in our community. Kept saying we couldn't do it. And it makes a lot of sense. To be able to figure out how to make that happen. You've also got the building at where Step is and the karate stu- Kreske building has it upstairs that they could utilize, but they do have but there are some of those upstairs that I think we should be trying to utilize and finding different things that can be done with that. Cause that's, that's where you could put a yoga studio.
Yeah, that was nice. Obviously, obviously every, every single case, Mike and his, his department would have to review on a case-by-case basis. But yeah, that's a great idea, Mayor.
Hey Lori. Hey Lori, it's Merle. We tried, we, a couple of years ago, Main Street wanted to go in and be upstairs at the dental office. And then obviously this is before you came on board. And a couple of other times, because we looked at there's some apartments up there in some of those buildings like you mentioned. And we were told we couldn't do, we needed an elevator like this. And even though we had historic buildings, we were being kind of blocked in, in different instances. And that would be great because I think there's a lot of younger people that wouldn't mind living downtown and have those apartments and utilize those apartments. But we were blocked on a number of
Mike wants to talk about that or we want to
So the part that we were blocked on a little bit, right at the corner of Wayne Road and Michigan westbound there where the dental office was, there was not the elevator that was hanging us up. There were a few items that the owner was not really wanting to finish up with us. We were kind of close on that one actually.
Oh, okay.
A while back. But one thing that we do have to think about is, it's not just an elevator that we have to be concerned about. If we're going to change the second floor to a different type of use than what it was before, there's still a substantial amount of work that has to go into that. So
That's the other part of it.
We, we love those ideas and we want people to bring them to us and we'll certainly look at them, like Lori said, as they come on an individual basis.
And that, that's the other part of that is that this is staying the same use of the Eagle Building as it was before. Certainly if it was going from office to residential, then it would be significantly different in regards to review and what would be required.
I guess the thing that excites me is that we have things opened up to where years ago, it was, they wouldn't even consider it. So that makes a big difference.
It's a new day, Merle.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Well, it is.
Yeah.
Does Mr. Porter like to say anything?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
So do we have a motion to our meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all so very much. Please review your master plan. I think Mike and I might look at scheduling some individual meetings with some of you to go over the master plan, maybe a couple of you at a time in the next month or so. But just know that starting the 21st, all the notices go out and it's go time, everyone. So thank you all for all your work. Kathleen, thank you for staying on.
And your, your next meeting will probably be in person. You said, yeah, I think you've sent that out to them too, how things are looking, so.
Perhaps, yes. All right, good night, everyone.
You are. Thanks, Kathleen.
It's a beautiful master plan.